Hey Lynn.
Hi Dan.
Happy last meeting.
Well, thank you.
Second retirement.
Yeah.
Gil, Drew, Karen.
Good evening.
Weird screaming.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, Gil.
Karen.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Yeah. Happy Spring, almost.
May I ask a question, y'all? Is your screen a little bit not how it usually is?
Yeah, mine is.
Okay, because I just.
Weird, it'll go away in a second.
Oh, okay. I was just like, oh, did I do, knowing me, we did something.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. Kiko, can you switch the camera view? Thank you. All right, it's seven o'clock and I call the February ninth, 2021 Regular Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting to order. And first item is roll call. Commissioner Christensen.
Present.
Commissioner Benavides.
Present.
Commissioner Seavey.
Present.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Berenson. Don't see her yet. Commissioner Eb is here. We do have a quorum for the meeting. And the next item is approval of the agenda. Director Justice, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Commissioner Gay moved to approve the agenda. Commissioner Benavides seconded the motion. We'll have a roll call vote on this. Commissioner Christensen.
Yes.
Commissioner Benavides.
Yes.
Commissioner Seavey.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Berenson isn't here yet. Commissioner Eb, yes, motion carries unanimously. All right, the next item is the public comment period. And this is where members of the public may address the Planning and Zoning Commission to comment on issues, problems, or successes on topics that do not appear on this evening's agenda. So, audience members will be given an opportunity to comment on agenda items as they come up. So if you're here to speak about any of the agenda items, this is not where you make your comments. Speakers must register with the village staff prior to the beginning of the meeting. Kiko, do we have any members of the public signed up to speak? I see that Commissioner Berenson is here.
Yes, we do have people that would like to speak, stand by.
Okay.
Missy, Eb.
Yes.
And this is Camille Varos, and I did send comments in.
All right, are you here for the public comment?
Yes, please.
Okay, please state your address for the record.
427 Alcara Eso Road, Los Rancho's.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Varos.
And I did present my comments to Ms. Molina via email. And, well, I'm gonna make a comment, but I also have questions because I haven't been able to attend a lot of the P&amp;Z meetings in reference to the revitalization plan. But my question or comment is, I understand that the in the Village Center on, that's proposed on Fourth and Dosuna, that there's going to be a living facility that's expected to be five stories. Is that correct? Hello?
I'm going to let Ms. Justice respond to that, but I would prefer if you would. Go ahead, and then if you have a comment, please get to it.
So, Ms. Varos, if you could, I guess, state all of your comments and questions at the same time, that'd be appreciated. At this point, we can't really offer a dialogue, so if you could just present all of your comments and questions, that would be appreciated, and you are also welcome to reach out to staff as well.
Okay. And I guess my comment is that I am concerned, and I have been concerned for a while as a resident, a long time resident of Los Rancho's, concerned about traffic, especially as we proceed forward with the revitalization plan. Just with the, the thought of, you know, living facilities, other entities that would provide access to shopping and entities that would be of interest to people in walking distance, and absolutely. I, you know, development and plans move forward, and I, I understand that, but my question is, comment is, I am concerned about traffic impact, especially when the Peterson project start moving forward, and I think they've already been approved, and I've been at those meetings, and that, that project on the corner of Fourth and Chavez, and then on the east side with all of that development, my concern is the traffic. And question is, do we have a traffic study or analysis in place? And I, I don't know, do I address that to Ms. Justice, the P&amp;Z Director?
So, Ms. Varos, if that is all your comments, then I'll be able to address your questions after.
Um, yeah, I think basically, and then the elevations, you know, if, if the facilities are from what the meetings that I have attended and read is that there'd be no, no excess of elevations beyond three stories. And I don't want to state information that I'm not fully aware of, but, you know, with sometimes in talk and hearsay amongst residents and neighbors that there is a concern about elevations going above three stories, possibly five stories. And my comment to that, if that's true, you know, that blocks our, our view and sun coming from the east side. And I guess the question would be if the elevations are above three feet, when we were told at some of the meetings, it would only, the developer would only develop according to the needs and the desires of the resident.
And, okay, thank you, Ms. Varos. I understand that your two questions are about traffic and elevations, and that you have concerns about those two issues. So, Ms. Justice, can you respond briefly to Ms. Varos's questions?
Yes, so just to address those specific questions, I'll do that now, and after the general comment period, I'll have just kind of a overarching statement on the Village Center project. So, for the five stories, so the project is not anticipated to be five stories at this time. The proposal right now is to comply with the Village Center code, and the Village Center Zone Code does have a height maximum of three stories. So, the maximum that any building in the Village Center project will be is three stories. And as for whether there is a traffic impact study or traffic impact analysis, there is not one at this time, although that is a requirement of the developer as we move forward with plans. At this point, we don't have a traffic impact study because we haven't, I guess, the developer hasn't proceeded to that point.
Okay.
And then, just as a quick clarifying point, the revitalization project for Fourth Street is a different project than the Village Center project, which is at Fourth and Dosuna.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Justice. Are there any other members of the, the public who would like to speak?
Standby.
Kiko, if you could let us know when, when the next person is ready.
Joe Craig should be in right now.
Okay, Mr. Craig, please state your name and address for the record. Apparently, he's not with us yet. Is there someone else who's signed up to speak? I see his name in a square here, but I don't see, he doesn't seem to be connected.
Mr. Craig, we cannot hear you, but you have been admitted in. Mr. Craig, are you there? We can move on for right now.
Yeah, let's move on if there's, if there's another person that's signed up.
There is, standby. Patricia Garcia, you are now in the meeting.
Hi, thank you. I had trouble signing in for some reason.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
Patricia Garcia Martinez, 512 Grecian Northwest. It's off of Fourth and Guadalupe.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead and make your statement.
I didn't quite hear Tiffany's answer as far as height goes. Tiffany, do you mind answering again? I understood it was gonna be like five stories. Hi.
Currently, the, the height is three stories, is what she said. Go ahead and make your comment, please.
Thank you. Well, I looked at a picture of it. I got a picture of it, and it just looks like there's gonna be so much in the 12 acres. And I think a traffic study should be done. Our street, Fourth Street, is already very, very busy. People have a hard time getting in and out of their streets that they live in, and I cannot imagine that much growth and density on that property, which was my grandfather's, by the way, and it was a farm, and it's gonna be quite a transition. Are there gonna be pictures or diagrams, plans of this as time goes on? I have not been able to go to the meetings or come on Zoom because of COVID and an ill son, so are there gonna be more pictures as this develops?
Yes, I'm sure that there will be public notice when, when there's something happening there. Currently, apparently, it's just in the concept phase. Please correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Justice. Do you have any other comments?
No, thank you. I, I just saw that picture, and it just looked very busy. And I just don't know how our street can handle much more busy. I was kind of hoping it would have more activity centers for our, our neighbors. When I lived across, I live across from Guadalupe Village, and they had a YMCA there. We've lived in this home 62 years, and that was actually wonderful. Why can't you all do something like that? They had a swimming pool, had activities for the kids, there's had meeting room and a kitchen. Why can't we just do something that'll enhance our North Valley and keep it rural rather than the high densities? You know, North Valley, we were Los Rancho's for 100 years, and this just seems like an overwhelming high density in that area. I'd like to see it retain, retained as a more rural place instead of more congestion and pollution and traffic and people. These apartments across from me were wonderful when they had the swimming pool, the YMCA activities for the kids and the neighbors. But now it's not as well. People do not own it, and it's Section 8, an awful lot, and that doesn't bring much culture in a positive way to a neighborhood, and that, that does happen down the road. That, that's why I get comments. Sorry, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I think Ms. Justice is gonna make some general comments, so please stay tuned. All right, is, is Mr. Craig available to make his comment, or is there someone else, Kiko?
Mr. Craig is no longer on the call, but if anybody else would like to speak on the public comment, they can raise their hand. I've had nobody else indicate that they're, that they'd like to speak at this time.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Justice, did you say you wanted to make some general comments?
Yes, Commissioners, members of the public who are attending, I just wanted to, I guess, clarify some things about the Village Center project. And just to let you know that we have a Village Center Project webpage on our website now. It's one of the top tabs next to the Fourth Street project. That's where all the documents that are on the project so far are up there for future documents as well, and you can also see, similar to the Fourth Street project, we will have updates as the project progresses and a email newsletter that you can sign up for, as well as staff contact information. So I highly recommend that anybody who is interested in the Village Center project, visit our webpage on the project. And then I guess I would also just like to clarify, a couple folks mentioned that there was some conceptual photos or understanding that the project is going to be five stories. I believe that, that those photos were conceptual diagrams, conceptual photos, references to projects that exist elsewhere. Those were not the actual designs proposed for the Village Center project. It was, it was more, I guess, I think, a visual for, I guess, a point of reference. And also that these comments will also be passed on to the Board of Trustees as well. And if anybody has any comments, they're also welcome to comment at tomorrow night's Board of Trustees meeting, too.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Justice, and the, the drawings that are being referred to, I went back and looked at, at the Village Newsletter, and indeed, there is a five-story development, conceptual designs for that, which surprised me, too, but that is not apparently the project that is being developed in our Village Center. Okay. We'll move on now to the consent agenda. And all matters under the consent agenda are considered routine.
Commissioner, Mr. Craig is now in the meeting.
Okay.
Could just let him comment as well.
Okay, Mr. Craig, we couldn't hear you before, but we can see you now. Are you?
Thank you, Chairman.
Go ahead.
Did you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
We had to shut down and redo. I do have a comment during the, I believe, Section A. During the, the, the presentation, I'm not quite sure what the commission is doing anymore as far as comments. I don't have a public comment. I do have, I would like to participate in the discussion. We had a difficulty with the previous meeting that I believe was a violation of the State Open Meetings Act. I did talk with Danielle about that, so are we allowed to participate in the meetings, Chairman, or is this only discussion only?
Which meeting are, what, what part of the meeting are you just referring to, Mr. Craig?
Where public discussion comes up, and if you allow.
The public hearing?
Yes.
Public hearings?
If you allow me to
Your vote.
Back up, I'll be happy to give you which that one.
We only have one public hearing this evening. It's, it's ZMA 2102.
Exactly.
Yeah, this is the public comment period. I, do you not have a?
I don't have a public comment. I do have, I would like to participate. You did not allow me to participate in the previous meetings, and we're having a, gonna have a serious discussion with the Attorney General if we do not start allowing discussions during our Zoom meetings.
Mr. Craig, I think you've always been allowed to participate at the appropriate time, so you will, you will be allowed to participate in the public hearing. Thank you.
21-02.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're now on the approval of the minutes for the December 8, 2020 regular meeting.
Sorry, Chair Eb, we have one more person who's raised their hand and indicated that they would like to speak on the general comment period.
Okay. Is that person admitted yet?
They are coming in right now, standby.
Okay, thank you.
This is Camille Varos again, so was that? I'm having problems. Ms. Justice, was that in reference to me, because I did raise my hand again?
Did you have more, something?
Well, I was just, I was just gonna comment on, just expand some comments on what Ms. Martinez had presented in reference to elevation and traffic in those areas. And looking at history, and my comment is that many times, even though it said that there's progress or determinations haven't been finalized, many times they've been voted upon, and there's not a whole lot of input from the residents. And that's a real big concern, because before we know it, if, even if it's three stories in the ordinance of the, in Los Rancho's in terms of elevation, before we know it, it's already five, and it's too late once something starts, and I just want to make sure that there's transparency for us to know when those decisions are gonna be made and not just after the fact, and as developments proceed.
Okay.
And that's my comment.
Okay, thank you, and I don't know if you heard Ms. Justice. She did say that there is a special tab on the Village website for the, the Village Center development, and so I would recommend that you check with that to see what's up. Okay. Any other public comment?
There is, oh, there is more, standby.
Is this Patricia Martinez again?
Yes, Ms. Martinez, you are muted right now.
Do that on purpose. Just on Ms. Fatos's comments, I did campaign for Dawn, and you know, was just really anxious for him to be the mayor there. And at one of the initial meetings, I got him to promise, and there was many, many people there, that the development there would not go higher than three stories, and Ms. Fatos kind of was concerned about that. And I'm hoping that he'll stick to his promise to the community and, and not and and not worry about what the developer wants because, you know, down the street, South on Fourth, they're very ugly. They add nothing to the community. There's nothing rural or attractive about those. My husband went to Kazakhstan and they look like the cement buildings he stayed in while he was working there, except that they have a little paint on them. So please, whatever you do, I'm sure you'll do it nicely, but don't let it get any higher as Mr. Lopez promised us at the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Any other raised hands? Kiko?
Commissioners, not at this time.
All right, thank you. All right. We're going to try to get to the approval of the minutes again for the December eight, twenty twenty general, uh, regular meeting. Are there any corrections or comments from any of the commissioners? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the minutes?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is that Rachel?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, the uh motion to approve the minutes has been made and seconded. Uh, we'll have a roll call vote. Commissioner Christensen.
Yes.
Commissioner Benavides.
Yes.
Commissioner Seavey.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay. You're muted, but.
I will abstain because I was not at that meeting.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Berenson.
Yes.
Commissioner Eevee, yes. So the motion carries unanimously with one abstention. All right, thank you. Now we'll move on to the public hearings and applications. And the first and only one this evening is ZMA twenty-one dash oh two. A request by Jerome Maldonado for a zone map amendment to change one hundred feet of R two zoning to C one zoning as allowed by section nine point two point twenty-five E eight for a property in the C one and R two zone in the Fourth Street character area. The property is located at seventy-two sixteen Fourth Street Northwest and is legally known as tract one fifty-seven A, as shown on map twenty-seven of the Middle Rio Grande Conservancy District, projected section twenty-one T eleven N R three E N M P M. Village of Los Rancho's to Albuquerque, Burnley County, New Mexico. Property contains one point two nine oh six acres more or less. Are there any commissioners who will recuse themselves from this item? All right. Attorney Winter, please swear in. Director Tiffany Justice.
Tiffany, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Director Justice, may we have your planning report, please?
Uh, yes, uh Chair Commissioners, uh just a quick um correction for the public notice. The public notice listed the acreage as one point two nine acres, uh as that's what was listed uh in Burnley County. However, the legal description of the lot does have the acreage as one point three eight acres, so it's slightly bigger. So this lot is currently dual zoned uh with the front portion that abuts Fourth Street zoned C one uh and the back portion that abuts the Chomi Sal lateral uh zoned R two. About point five seven acres are zoned C one and about point eight one. Um, and currently, the C one zone extends three hundred feet from Fourth Street, as is uh a bit of a general rule for uh commercial properties along Fourth Street. Uh, the request is to extend the C one zone by one hundred feet, which would uh change the acreage to uh point seven six acres, zone C one, and about point six two acres, zone R two. The property has commercial buildings at the front and parking at the rear uh commercial portion, uh which is about midway through the property. Uh, the back portion is zoned residential and mostly vacant, except for some parked vehicles and potential construction or landscaping material um as you can see in your packet. Uh, a zone change application for this property was done in two thousand fifteen. Um, and it was ultimately denied. Uh, the original uh zone change did mention that it was uh for use as a contractor's yard, and if the zone change was approved, the applicant would have to obtain conditional use for a contractor's yard. The, in this case, the applicant has not expressed that this zone change would be for a contractor's yard. Uh, the assumption is that the existing materials uh and equipment in the residential portion would remain there as the request is for a zone change for additional commercial parking and equipment storage. For the surrounding area, the property uh and surrounding properties under the Fourth Street character area, the property to the east on the other side of the lateral is an unincorporated Burnley County. Uh, so for analysis, there's a couple of points. Uh, one is uh the zone change and the other is the contractor's yard uh and the parking lot. So the zone change is for commercial parking and equipment storage, uh outdoor equipment storage uh and materials, which is not specified in the application, but uh we were able to see in site photos uh does constitute a contractor's yard. Uh, the zone change could be used as both a parking lot and as a contractor's yard. And if the zone change is approved, a conditional use uh would be required uh to store equipment and or contractor's materials. Uh, as for the merits of the zone change, um the first point is that NMSA section three dash twenty-one dash five A and B apply to this zone map amendment application, and they are met. Uh, A references uh the compliance with the community's master plan, uh and I'll reference that a little bit later. Uh, B references uh compliance with the character of the area. Uh, the property is in the Fourth Street character area, which has a combination of residential, commercial uses, and zone properties. And much of the east side of the Fourth Street is dual zoned uh C one and uh residential uh just like this property currently is. And most of the properties abutting the Chomi Sal lateral are zoned residential. Um, granting of expansion of the C one zone by one hundred feet would still retain a residential use along the back portion abutting the Chomi Sal lateral. Uh, the size of the R two zoning uh would still allow for a compliant residential home to be built. Uh, for the second point, uh, there is, and is not, public interest in changing the zone uh prior to uh publishing of the packet, but Village received no comments in favor or in opposition to the application. Uh, however, we have received comments in opposition at this time. And so with that, uh, the fourth uh Fourth Street is the sole commercial corridor in the village. Um, and expansion of the C one zone along Fourth Street does allow for a wider variety of development, including commercial mixed-use and higher-density residential. And with uh the opportunity for higher-density residential, uh, commercial mixed-use, there is also the requirement uh that any development be reviewed by the governing body, and neighbors would also be notified. So uh, I guess that that differs from the current residential zoning because uh any residential development does not have to be noticed to neighbors or the governing body if it's compliant with our code. Uh, for the third point, the Board of Trustees will not spot zone for the private interest of the owner or applicant. Uh, the property to the west and the front portion of this lot are zones C one, and the property immediately to the north is also dual zoned uh three hundred feet C one from Fourth Street. Uh, so this would not be considered spot zoning. Um, the fourth point, the application for a zone change is not warranted. So uh, on the one hand, dual-zoned properties uh do have to handle different development requirements on the same lot. Um, and having residential zoning directly behind commercial can be unappealing for uh potential residential buyers. And in this case, the applicant desires to expand their parking and outdoor equipment storage, which is not allowed in the R two zone. However, the applicant did not identify constraints for the current C one zoning that explain why the existing zoning is not sufficient for additional parking or equipment storage. Uh, the current configuration of the lot uh may make equipment storage difficult as parking and vehicle flow can interfere. Um, and extension of the C one zone may be warranted. In addition, based on a rough estimate of the Bill's square footage and the village's parking requirements, uh, this property does meet the village's minimum parking requirements already. And there is support for this zone change within the twenty thirty-five master plan in the overall village goals, village form, and economic development sections. And as a general rule, uh in the master plan, uh, we recognize that the three hundred-foot guideline for commercial zoning uh is not a fixed value. Uh, for dual-zone properties in particular, the master does encourage zone changes of dual-zone properties to one zone. Uh, so with that, the department recommends the commission forward a recommendation of denial of ZMA twenty-one dash oh two, a request for a zone map amendment for one hundred feet of R two zoning to C one zoning as allowed by section nine point two point two five E eight for a property in the C one and R two zone in the Fourth Street character area with the following findings. The lot is dual-zoned C one and R two in the Fourth Street character area. The surrounding zones are residential, commercial, and the back portion of the lot would remain residential up to the Chomi Sal lateral, keeping with the character of the proposed uh of the properties along the east side of Fourth Street. The remaining portion is large enough to still allow for a single-family residence. Uh, NMSA section three dash twenty-one dash five A and B apply to this zone map amendment application and are met. There is possibly public interest and uh public opposition in changing this zone. The application would not be considered spot zoning for the private interest of the owner or applicant. Uh, and the application for the zone change is not warranted, as it is for parking, which already meets the minimum requirement, and outdoor equipment storage. Configuration of the lot does not allow for additional parking, and the addition of an out- uh outdoor storage area uh could remove existing parking in the existing C one area. However, the inability to expand or have these uses is not a cause for a zone change. No application to amend. Uh, the zoning for the property has been filed within the last twelve months, and public notice requirements have been met. Uh, and uh before I stand for any questions, I will also just make a note that uh the commission decision tonight is a recommendation to the board. So no matter whether the commission uh recommends approval or denial, it does go before the board for their final decision. Uh, with that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Director Justice. Are there any commissioners that have questions for Ms. Justice?
I I have a question. I I don't know. Does somebody else raise their hand first?
I think, I thought I saw Commissioner Gay mumbling or heard him.
Go ahead, Gay.
Tiffany, can you explain what JJM Properties said that they were sending the additional documentation required for the zone change for the property, blah, blah. Can you tell me what that additional documentation was and why it was missing?
Oh, uh, so Commissioner Gay, Commissioners, uh, so page eighteen of the packet, it goes in, I guess, uh reverse chronological order. Uh, the documents that we received uh after that are uh before that. So we received a letter um dated January eleventh that was received after uh the, after page eighteen, that references additional documentation. All of the app, all of the documents that the applicant included uh in their submittal are included in the packet.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Benavides.
Uh, I, I, yes, um, Director Justice, so um in your analysis, uh, uh, number four, the application for a zone change is not warranted. Uh, in that first paragraph, the last sentence, you say accessing the back residential portion requires a potential resident to maneuver through business activity to reach their portions, which can reduce the desirability of the residential area. So that, that is the case whether they are granted the extra hundred feet or not. Is that correct?
Yes.
That, what were your, what that point is trying to make?
Uh, so Commissioner Benavides, Commissioners, so that, um, so the section on whether the zone change is warranted includes uh points as to uh the application being warranted and not warranted. For all dual-zoned properties, uh, there is a disadvantage of having uh residential zoning in the back portion that residents would have to drive through uh a commercial area in order to get to. Um, that can be seen as a disadvantage. Uh, that can also be seen as an advantage depending on the property owner.
Okay, and uh so, and and then one more thing. Uh, so in in your section, department recommendations and findings, um, you, I mean, some of your bullets actually support the the uh the applicant in wanting to uh increase the commercial zone by a hundred feet. And and the one that does not is, is the applicant, application for the zone change is not warranted, as it is for parking. Um, it, so am I correct in saying that is the main reason uh for your recommendation of a denial?
Uh, Commissioner Benavides, Commissioners, yes. Uh, so there are four main points uh to the zone change application, uh whether a section of our state statutes are being met, whether there's public interest in changing the zone, uh confirmation that the Board of Trustees will not be spot zoning uh if they approve this zone change, and the zone change must be warranted. Uh, so there's um this application does meet some of these requirements, and it also does not meet some of these requirements uh just based on my analysis.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Justice? Miss, uh, Commissioner Seavey.
Yeah, Director Justice, if the hundred feet were to be granted, um, would the R two zone, would there still be space for the R two zone in the back to to have a property, to have a residence built on it?
Uh, Commissioner Seavey, Commissioners, yes. So if the hundred feet was granted, uh, the portion of the property that would be zoned R two would be point six two acres, uh, which our minimum area requirement is half an acre. So they they would be allowed to have residents in the back portion.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, um, is the applicant present?
I don't believe so.
Hmm. The applicant or an agent? No one here.
And by. Their applicant appears to not be present.
Okay. And um, Ms. Justice, can you uh affirm that the applicant was given notice at this meeting?
Uh, Commissioner Eevee, Commissioners, yes. Uh, the applicant was given notice.
Okay.
Uh, both through the uh physical public notice and uh via email where we included instructions for attending the meeting.
Right. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of the application? In favor of the application? If so, please use the raise hand function on your screen. Kiko, do we have anyone?
I have one hand raised uh when you asked for in favor, so I'm gonna let Mr. Craig in.
Okay. Okay, uh, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Joe Craig, Bible five, Caillou, Pajadito Northwest.
And Attorney Winter, please swear in, Mr. Craig.
Joe, I know you can't, I can't see you, but, oh, there you are. Uh, you've got your right hand raised. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I swear to tell the truth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Craig.
Chairman, Commissioners, um, previously, I was a finding and zoning commissioner for the Village of Los Rancho's for five years. We uh in a We, in a sort of strange meeting, approved the ATEX property as a C1 zone, which is the, the tank farm to the north of this project, and all of the project, the properties to railroad. Trustee Rick Abini was on that commission at the time. Joe Brawley was chairman of it. It was a pretty large undertaking. I didn't understand why we needed to do it, but we did it. I was actually, as I started asking questions during the meeting, I was shushed by the previous village manager. I don't particularly like being shushed, but I, I did keep my mouth shut. This is a large property that was approved by planning and zoning. Somehow, that got hidden because we have a former trustee that lives in that area that has been very anti-business about any of the properties. Hops, the property to the south, I think there's about five properties. You guys have got a hot potato here. You're gonna get sued if the village staff does not go back and pull up what the Planning and Zoning Commission did and approved. Because they got, I, I've been able to, I cannot find that. I have found where the trustees approved only the ATEX property as a C1. Commissioner Chairman at that time brought, Brawley wanted to actually put a road paralleling the Chamisol lateral to railroad to open up the access. There's, there's something I really don't like, any of the the things that have been going on with these, I think, about five properties. And I would really request that the Planning and Zoning Commission would direct Planner Justice and the village staff to go back into the planning and zoning documents, find out what was approved, approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and let's get this straightened out, because the village is gonna get sued. And I'll be happy to testify in district court as to my recollection of what the planning, my actions as a planning and zoning commissioner was. But we approved C1 for all these back properties all the way to the rail, from ATEX to railroad.
Okay, do you have any specific comment about this application, Mr. Craig?
I would encourage the Planning and Zoning Commission to defer on this. Though Mr. Maldonado is here, and I've actually, I think, I would request Planner Justice get with the, the trustees and actually find out what was approved, because this is a mess. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Craig. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application?
I have no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to the application? In opposition?
Yes, please stand by.
Thank you.
Mary Holman is in the call. If you could please unmute, please.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Mary Holman, 7318 Fourth Street Northwest. That is our residence. We also have 7320 Fourth Street, which is commercial, and 7324 and a half, which is also residential.
Okay. Attorney Winter, please swear in, Ms. Holman.
Ms. Holman, please raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I swear.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Holman.
I stand in opposition of this request for a number of reasons. The biggest reason is, well, let me, let me give you a little bit of background. I too, like Mr. spoke a few minutes ago, I was a planning and zoning commissioner, just like all of you are, for three years, and then I was also a Board of Trustee for 16 years. And I have one of the adjoining properties to this whole strip of land that Mr. Craig referred to. As was earlier stated by Director Justice, the Planning and Zoning Commission on matters of zoning only makes recommendations to the planning and zoning. And so that reference that Mr. Craig made about their approval from the planning and zoning, as you can see, that couldn't have been an approval. It was only a recommendation. And that recommendation was not accepted by the Board of Trustees once it went out there. But in regard to the property at question, this has been used as a construction yard, not only just for parking, but also for gravel and all kinds of materials. He, Mr. Maldonado, had asked, he had actually purchased the property a number of years ago, and it came to the attention of the Board of Trustees probably three years ago, because we had the neighbors complaining because of all of the early morning construction noises and such that were going on, the trucks backing up, the gravel going through, and we're talking about 5 o'clock in the morning that this is going on. And the, the village brought it to his attention that he was not zoned in that matter. He made a request, and it went through the process and was denied. And indeed, it was beyond the 12 months that was in Director Justice's report. Even after he was denied, he continued to use it as a construction yard. And the village went through a number of times and tried to get him to stop. We had neighbors complaining at trustee meetings, and the village finally had to do a cease and desist to him. So now he's back trying to do it again, and, and as a former trustee, I can tell you that we had so many people of the neighbors coming in, and they had actually lost their, their trust in the village because we weren't stopping him from doing something that he wasn't supposed to be doing. And it was very, very much a shameful and embarrassing time for the village. Now he's back asking for permission to do it the right way, which I applaud him trying to come back the right way. But it is not an area that we need to be hearing construction noises that early in the morning or anything else. It backs on to the residents that are there on roll. I'm just, what, three lots away, and we can definitely hear all that noise come 5 o'clock in the morning. And this is an area, as Director Justice stated, that this whole back area along the Chamisol is approved and zoned for residences. And I'd like to see it stay that way. And in fact, when I worked with Director Justice trying to do some research last summer, we came up with the area from, let me look at this. The area from Los Ranchos, the street Los Ranchos Northwest, south, all the way to Vineyard is all along the Chamisol. All of those are are zoned so that it's residential, whether it's R1 or it's A1, it's, it's allowed for residential back there. And we'd like to see it stay that way. Now, although Commissioner, former Commissioner Craig had mentioned about the ATEX, which is just north and kind of west of my property, that is up at the very front along Fourth Street, yes, it is C1, but all of those properties have a conditional use or a temporary use, and the underlying zoning on it along the Chamisol from the 300-foot back primarily, there's a few jogs in there. But it's all A1 and R1 or R2 through there. And we'd certainly like to see the ability for residents to stay back in that area. That does give the businesses along the Fourth Street corridor the ability to do that live work that was envisioned with the village plan. So that's my comments. I would just hope that the village would continue on that path to try to keep that as R1, A2 as we can, so that we can allow that strip of residential use. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Holman. Are there any other members of the public who are here to speak in opposition to the application?
Stand by. Mr. Douglas Copeland, you've been added to the meeting.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record. Mr. Copeland, can you hear me? We can't hear you. You seem to be muted. We're not hearing you. Mr. Copeland? We still can't hear you. Okay, he's gonna try again, I think. Hello?
Maybe he can phone in.
I think he just can't find his mute button.
No, he's unmuted on the system, however.
Can you hear me now? Find your chance?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
On the system, however.
Can you hear me now? Okay, I'm sorry about that. I apologize. I've never done this before.
Mr. Copeland, if you have anything running in the background that, like the, the live feed on Facebook or on the webpage, if you could mute or turn that off, because it's giving us an echo.
Okay, can, can you hear me now?
Perfect.
All right, let's start over. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, you can hear me now, right?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is Douglas Copeland. I live at 301 Roll Road Northwest. My property is adjacent to the property in question on the
Hold on.
South side.
Hold on. I'm gonna have the attorney swear you in because you're about to give testimony under oath.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm having a hard time hearing.
Mr. Copeland?
Let me try to put on a headset. Maybe I could hear better.
Okay. Technical problems.
Mr. Copeland, can you hear me?
I can hear you a little bit.
Okay, can I ask you to raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead and, and make your comments, Mr. Copeland.
Okay, can you repeat that again?
Yes, please proceed with your comments.
Oh, okay. So I live at 301 Roll Road, which is the adjacent property to the south side. So my property consists of two structures. One's a single-family home where I live, and the other is a duplex that are rentals. The duplex backs right up to the slot. And the problems I've had in the past when he's using it as a construction site, there's lots of noise, there's dirt, there's dust. My tenants cannot open the window in the summer because of the noise. Sometimes it's very early in the morning, as you heard from Mary Holman. She, she described it perfectly. And I'm just concerned that this is gonna open up the residential part again. And he's gonna be driving his trucks, and he's still dumping materials there. And it's, it's a real nuisance.
Okay. Anything else?
That's about it. You know, there was a hearing, I'm sure you're aware of, in November of 2017, where me and my partner attended, and he was denied the request. He was asking for the whole lot to be, I think, rezoned, if I remember correctly. But I think extending this is just gonna give him more, I don't know, leeway with the residential part.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Copeland? Anything else?
And yeah, of course, I'm worried about property values and trying to rent out my rentals. That's a big concern of mine. So that's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
All right. Kiko, are there any other people who have indicated they'd like to speak in opposition to this application?
Yes, stand by. Mr. Don Allison, you've been allowed into the meeting. If you can unmute your audio and or video.
All right, let me see if I can do that. This is, this is, okay. I'm gonna have this camera.
Mr. Allison, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Don Allison. My address is 12501 Crestline Avenue Northeast in Albuquerque. I'm the joint owners of 301 Roll that Mr. Copeland is representing.
Okay, Ms. Winter, please swear in, Mr. Allison.
Mr. Allison, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Allison, go ahead and proceed with your comments.
There's not much more that I can really add to the comments of Mrs. Holman and Doug Copeland. But if you have any questions for either of us, I'd be glad to respond to any commissioners' questions. Well, we are unanimously opposed to the request.
Okay, and you're a co-owner of the, the property along rail. Okay.
Right.
Right. Thank you.
It's a lovely, it's a lovely area, and we'd like to keep it that way.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much for the opportunity.
All right. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak in opposition to the application?
If there was anyone else, would you please raise your hand? No one else has raised their hand?
Okay, thank you. Normally, I would ask the applicant to respond to comments. Previously, the applicant was not present. Just in case the applicant is present now, please identify yourself if you would like to respond to any of the comments.
The applicant is not here.
Okay. All right, then the floor is closed for comments, and we'll move to discussion on the application among the commissioners who would like to start off. Any comments?
Well, I'm not clear. This is Rachel Berenson. I'm not absolutely clear on the purpose of the request and it would have been nice to have the applicant here. So maybe it behooves us to defer it, although I'm not really sure if that because he's had the opportunity. And that's another thing. Director Justice, I would like, at the end of this, just to clarify how everyone has the opportunity to, I know you let people address the commission even after the time has has come and gone. I know that you allow people to come and make comment and and to provide written comments, but maybe we can address that at a later point in time, but I'm not understanding the purpose of it. I almost feel as if he's trying to skirt around the duty of trying to apply for a contractor's yard. It certainly looks like a contractor's yard, sounds like a contractor's yard from the people's comments, so if I was if I was asked to make a recommendation, I would recommend denial. But I'm not sure whether we should defer it to allow the applicant to be here. I I'm not sure in regards to that.
Well, my feeling is that we shouldn't defer it because for a couple reasons. I'm sure Mr. Maldonado had notice about the meeting. And you can see from his application that there's no meat there. It's just a real generic request with no reasoning, you know, to support, you know, why any of those businesses in front would need more parking or more equipment storage. That's one reason. The other is, you know, this is the second or third bite at the apple, maybe fourth or fifth in my account. There was the proceeding in 2015 that might have spilled over into 2016 where apparently the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the zone change and then the Board of Trustees denied it. And then after I came on the commission, one of the commentators who opposed this mentioned a meeting in November. And I remembered I had this vague memory of that meeting, and so I went back and found the minutes. And it was a strange thing. It was an appeal of the director's decision denying a petition that the referenced property has been continuously used as a contractor's yard, so basically, they were arguing that it should be legally non-conforming use, you know, that whole property had been used at one time as a contractor's yard. And then the previous owner had ceased using it a couple years before selling it to Mr. Maldonado. And he was arguing that, you know, there was continuous use and and that application was denied by this commission seven to zero. So that's that's the second reason why I don't think we should defer it. Any other comments among the, go ahead, Mr. Benavides, you're there you go.
So Director Justice, does the does the applicant have a business license and what does that license allow the applicant to do?
Commissioner Benavides, commissioners, the applicant does have a business license. I believe it is, so the interesting thing about I guess, business licenses and property ownership is that you can have businesses at multiple addresses and you can also have a business license that isn't for a property that you own. So the applicant does have a business license for a landscaping company. I don't know that it operates at this address.
Oh, interesting. Okay, I mean, so it's, yeah, this is a tough one. But I gotta tell you, I give a lot of weight to the neighbors and their opinions and this sort of thing. If the applicant was here, it might have made a difference. But yeah, that's where I am right now. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Commissioner Seavey, what's your comment?
Yeah, I think I would also move for denial. When you look at the definitions under the ordinances of a contractor's yard, a parcel used for the outdoor storage of contractors' equipment and materials customarily used in the trade carried on by the construction contractor. It's pretty clear that that's what this is and, you know, if he wants to go that route and to apply for a contractor's yard, you know, going through those motions and what would require that, you know, I think we could hear it then, but not this way. I wouldn't agree with it.
Anyone else wanna comment? Yeah, I'm inclined the same way. Not just because the applicant isn't here, but, you know, generally, I'm in favor of expanding the commercial zone along Forest Street, you know, and we've done it before. Where there's a need, a specific need that is articulated and and here it's just this generic request for who knows what, parking and whatever. And this property abuts residences, not only the the R2 part of it, but the middle portion of it too. There are some rentals there where people live. And there were lots of complaints about what they were doing before and they were doing it, you know, without proper authorization. And so you know, I think the master plan does contemplate some flexibility to the size of the commercial zone along Forest Street. But this property doesn't seem to be appropriate for doing that, you know, that's my my feeling. All right, so is there any other discussion prior to calling for a motion? And you'll have more opportunity to comment after there's a motion pending. Is there a motion?
Chair Eby, I will make a motion to uphold the director or the planning department's recommendation to forward a recommendation of denial of ZMA 21-02.
Okay, I think the proper wording is not to include the director's recommendation, but just to forward a recommendation to the Board of Trustees for denial.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so the Commissioner Gay has moved to forward a recommendation of denial and Commissioner Seavey has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I would add one thing, Madam Chair. Looking at the New Mexico statute, 1978 321 5B, you know, it's asking the zoning authority to look at the district and the peculiar suitability for these proposed uses and just hearing all the public commentary on this and hearing this story, it just it just further it just makes a case to deny it.
That would be a finding that would go with the recommendation. Any other comments? Anyone want to add any findings or further comments? Okay. Then I'm going to call for a vote on the motion. And this is the motion to forward a recommendation of denial of ZMA 21-02 to the Board of Trustees. Commissioner Chris Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Benavides?
Yes.
Commissioner Seavey?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes.
Commissioner Berenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Eby, yes. The motion carries unanimously. And let the record show that public hearing item 4A, the request by Jerome Maldonado for a zone map amendment is formally closed. And thank you for all the people who attended and made comments about this item. All right. The next item is old business. And apparently, we have no old business. The next item is new business and there's no new business. So we'll move on to the planning department report. Ms. Justice, can you please give us your report?
So commissioners, just a general update on the department. Jennifer Schilling is processing business renewals. She's working on the February issue of the Village Vision Magazine and is moving forward with changes on our website along with Chico, RET Specialist. The fourth quarter and end of year business reports are included in this packet. We won't see a full list of closures for 2020 for a few months since we have a late renewal period, grace period, and businesses are not required to tell us when they close. Keen Heinzelman is patrolling the village and working with property owners to bring their properties into compliance, and he's also processing large building permits. I'm working on drafting an ordinance on short-term rentals. We're waiting to ensure we receive feedback from the public. But in the meantime, I'm talking with companies that provide web scraping services to aid in short-term rental code enforcement and identification. I'm also working on the hazard mitigation plan update with Jeff Phillips, our emergency management coordinator. And drafting an ordinance on cannabis, which the village plans to adopt. We are advertising the cannabis ordinance at tomorrow night's meeting with, after that advertisement, likely adoption in March. And there was an article in the January Village Vision Magazine on this topic that is intended to solicit feedback. So you all and any members of the public are welcome to submit feedback, both on the cannabis ordinance and on the topic of short-term rentals. And the variance subcommittee continues to meet once per month. Commissioner Eby's drafted amendments to the current variance language and the village's legal council is reviewing it. We're going to have this available for the commission to review likely next month or the month afterwards. And just a brief summary of the potential changes. We will be looking to change the definition of variance to be less technically restrictive. Reorganizing the variance section for clarity, adding language that applies to all variance applications, changing the hardship criteria, moving and rephrasing the current criteria as five and six to general variance criteria and including a new number five. And adding language in the area regulations for the A1 zone for legally non-conforming lots to have alternative setback requirements if they are 50% or smaller than the lot size minimum. And to recap, the year included is an end-of-the-year report that on the department's activity, this was also presented to the Board of Trustees at their last meeting. And also, this is Commissioner Eby's last meeting. So I have a statement that I'd like to just read out for her. So it's with a heavy heart that this meeting, we say farewell to Commissioner and Chairwoman Lynn Eby, who served on the commission since 2016. Myself, staff, and the commission would like to thank her for her time as a commissioner, for her knowledge of the code, her attention paid to all parties in public hearings and respect given to the time and efforts of applicants and neighbors. She's completing her fifth and final year as commissioner, the last year in which she was in the role of chair. And given the sudden change of meeting format due to COVID-19, she's handled meeting proceedings pretty well and balanced providing the public a fair opportunity to express themselves with providing a facilitating commission discussion and deliberation. So she's been a great asset to the commission and she will be missed. Thank you, Lynn. You'll also be recognized at tomorrow night's Board of Trustees meeting. And we'll have a small token of our appreciation that will get to you as well. So, thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Oh, and with that, I stand for any questions.
Any questions for Director Justice? Okay, we'll move on to the commissioners' informal discussion. Are there any reports of information or any announcements or any informal things you'd like to discuss at this time?
I would just like Tiffany, if you would, to address again all the ways in which someone, I just want clarity. All the ways in which someone can address the commission via public comment or address the commission specifically regarding certain items. How are they allowed to get into the meeting? How are they allowed to be heard? Just, I just want to recap.
Commissioner Berenson, commissioners, so for each public hearing item, we send out notices to everybody within 300 or 400 feet of the property, depending on the size of the property. We send those all out to property owners, not necessarily tenants, so just as a heads up for that. The applicant is also given a sign that has to be posted visible from the roadway so that anybody who drives by is able to see that there is an application. And there's instructions for seeing the application, contacting the applicant, contacting staff on that sign as well. And all notices have instructions on attending the meeting and for obtaining the packet. These days with COVID, anybody who emails or calls us asking for the application, we're able to send them in advance of the posting of the meeting packet. They're welcome to submit written comments to the packet, to be included in the packet. And they are also welcome to submit written comments after the meeting packet has been published. It won't be included in the meeting packet, however, we do send them to commissioners. And folks are also welcome to submit verbal testimony at the meeting. This can either be the same as their written comment or it can be different. Folks are able and welcome to do both, written comment and verbal testimony. For general public comment, the same thing applies, except in this case, there is no general notice. Those who are interested in providing general public comment can't sign up to speak prior to the meeting. They're able to submit written comment and they're also able to comment at the meeting. And in addition to that, if for some reason somebody didn't sign up in advance and they are attending and wish to speak, they are able to do that so long as they indicate to us via Zoom that they're raising their hand and wish to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have any specific concerns, Commissioner Berenson?
Well, I was concerned about one of the speakers today stating that he didn't have the opportunity to address the commission. I was unaware of any time that that's ever happened, so I I just wanted to make sure that we're doing everything that we can do possibly to follow the Opens Meeting Act, even though we're via Zoom and that was my concern and that's why I wanted Tiffany to address that again, but I think I have clarity.
Yep. So I think some of the commissioners were at the meeting where Mr. Craig wanted to speak more than he was allowed to. He was allowed to make public comment. I think it was a special meeting where we were discussing. What was it, Tiffany?
So Commissioner Eby, commissioners, I believe it was a special meeting as an extension some of the items that were already on our regular meeting agenda, so. Uh, so things such as new business, old business, and Commissioners' informal discussion uh that are, that typically don't have public comment.
But he was allowed to make comment, it was just that he wanted to comment on each item individually instead of uh as a whole, so that was
That makes sense.
So the uh, the variance subcommittee, we wanted to, I wanted to thank Dan Gay and Gil Benavides and Tiffany for helping out with those meetings and um as Tiffany said, the the drafts have been sent to um the attorney, I guess, for vetting. And so when that comes before the commission, I might show up as a private citizen to answer any questions about, you know, how I came up with the draft I did and the process and so forth. And um yeah, thanks to Tiffany and um Jennifer and Kiko for all the technical assistance and and Nan Winter uh getting us through this uh COVID meeting period. It's been a real challenge, but it's been a pleasure and I wish you all well in the future, carry on.
Thank you. You will be very, you will be missed.
Will be missed.
Yeah, it's been great serving with you, Chair EB.
Good, good job Chair EB, it was a tough time, tough time.
It was different. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Dan, you wanna second it?
Second it.
Okay, all in favor? Anyone opposed? The motion carries unanimously, and uh the meeting for February nine, twenty twenty one is adjourned at eight twenty seven PM.